Mike, welcome y'all here tonight. And we're just about to get started, but before we begin, I would invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Mike Overton will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and the principle of liberty and justice
Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for the opportunity to live in the greatest nation in the world. We sometimes forget to appreciate all those who have sacrificed so much to give us our freedoms that we enjoy every day. We ask now that you be with us as we deliberate and participate in our own small way to this grand experiment known as a democratic republic. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mike. All right, let me again welcome you here tonight. This is the regular meeting of Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, July 24th, 2018. We will begin, well, first of all, let me make you aware, Bill, do you have those large print agendas there? In case anyone would like a large print agenda? And then I'll ask Rose to call a roll.
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Rick Culver?
Here.
Jeff Watson?
Here.
Mike Overton?
Here.
Colby Fulfer?
Here.
Mike Lawson?
Here.
Rick Evans?
Here.
Jim Reed?
Kathy J. Cox?
Here.
Ernest C.?
Here.
Okay. Comments from our citizens, item four. Council will hear brief comments from our citizens during this period. This is the time they set aside each meeting. And for that, if any of our residents would like to address the council, please come to the microphone, clearly state your name and address, and please understand that no action will be taken tonight. So if there's anyone who would like to address the council concerning an item that is not on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to come at this time. All right, seeing none? Oh, yes, sir.
My name is Arnold Bader, and I'm a resident of Walnut Grove Reston Memorial Basin Center, and I'm against the animal shelter for the following reasons: the barking dogs and all that noise, and the fact that there be people dumbing unwanted animals at their also property.
Okay.
And we don't need all that noise and stuff around my home. We're all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Arnold. Let me, yeah, we're probably going to table that tonight. So thank you all for coming out, and we'll certainly, you'll have other opportunities as that comes forward.
Is it possible, Doug, to move that up? It's number one on the agenda to let these people know that it will be tabled, or maybe not? If it's not tabled, then they're...
What do we need to do to move that up? We could move that up right now.
Yes, sir.
If someone, let me first see if there are any other comments unrelated to that that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone else that would like to? And we'll get past this agenda item. Okay, before Scott comes, would I entertain a motion to go ahead and deal?
Can we move 9A to number one on our agenda?
Okay.
Which is the resolution designated aside for new animal shelter to be tabled until the committee...
Okay, we have a motion in a second to move the item up?
Yes.
And deal with it? That's 9A?
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions? We'll let Rose catch up here when you're ready, Rose.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
Okay, now, do we have a motion concerning 9A?
I'd like to make a motion that we table the discussion until the next council meeting.
Or committee, yeah.
Well, the vote on the location would be the next council, but we'd have an opportunity to discuss at the committee.
Right. We will discuss at the committee in two weeks.
Mayor, if I could add an addendum to that, I'd like, since we're throwing out the proposed sites, I'd like to, not that I'm endorsing anything, but I'd like to throw out a, after reading the study about the site location, there's one we have in Springdale that's on city property that meets all the criteria as far as being centrally located, near a park, on a trail, and visible. I'd like, if it's possible, to have our architects look at 308 Park Street. There's an entire block there that is adjacent to the park, and it's surrounded by city property, so there's a lot of land available to put it there. At least this meets the criteria. Whether it would work or not, I don't know. It's the building that we just recently purchased from the Jones Foundation, and it's the rest of the block are the old metal sheds, et cetera, plus all the property immediately to the north and west of there, and actually to the south, except for the Quonset Hut building, is owned by the city.
Well, I can tell you a lot of reasons that that won't work. If you'd like for me to go into them, I can, that I don't think that would work.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I'd like to hear.
We just closed on that property yesterday. That is part of Luther George Park, and it is part of the downtown master planned area, and it is also part of a design excellence grant that we will be, that we have, that the DSA has received for design in Luther George Park. Too many balls in there for that area, in my opinion, Mike.
Well, my thought was, Mayor, that perhaps this would be a good opportunity to work with the downtown alliance there, because we're talking about wanting to have a central, nothing's more central than downtown Springdale, and it's just a thought for us, for our consideration, because it does meet the criteria in the study that was done for the animal shelter. Just throwing it out for the council's consideration.
Well, Councilman Fulfer has a motion on the table.
Oh, I'll second his, that is, to table this?
To table.
Yes, to table to council, Colby, or committee?
To table it until the next council meeting, but we would have an opportunity to discuss it at the next committee meeting.
Yes, I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I have something.
Yeah.
Several people in the audience came here tonight with probably some difficulty.
Right.
And I think that it would be courteous of us, of course, they're invited back if this gets tabled, and we'd certainly welcome anybody back, but if this gets tabled, frankly, it's an item that's not on the agenda that they could have spoke about earlier, so...
I thought I gave them that opportunity, but if they would like, if y'all would...
It was on the agenda then.
That's fine.
Yes, that's what I was just asking, because it's difficult...
All I'm saying is open it up to discussion for people that think they might not be able to come back. I think that would be a courteous...
Let's go ahead and deal with the motion on the table, which is to table this, and then we can go back and offer an opportunity...
Make sure they understand that they'd have the opportunity to come back when we're going to vote on it, but if they think they will not be able to come back, that we'd welcome any comments tonight.
Okay, we're voting on the motion to table.
So it would be to table to the August 14th city council meeting, and would also be discussed at the August 6th committee meeting. Is that right? Is that your motion?
Yeah, I think, yeah, that would work. I mean, the committee, at committee meeting will determine what to take forward, if anything, so.
Table for now.
So are we forwarding it back to committee?
Yes, I think that would be a, Colby, are you okay with that wording? Forwarding it back to committee?
I'd be fine with that.
Okay. I think that would be a little cleaner.
Yeah, I think that's much better.
And that the committee can then do their...
I would just make, because he said the next council, so I wanted to make sure they understood what we're doing.
It's probably, hopefully, that's what it'll be, but, so, all those in favor, oh, I can't do that that way. Rose, go ahead. Trying to make Rose's job easier tonight.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
Okay, before we move on to item five, we'll go back to comments from our residents, from our citizens, and however y'all want to do that, we want to give you every opportunity, as Arnold has, to make his comments to the council, so we'll certainly entertain any way y'all want to do that. I see.
What I asked...
And we can take some time if we need to.
But what I asked, excuse me, Doug, what I was asking as you all were chatting up here, they are all, because it's a challenge for some to get here, I know that, and to come next Monday night, if, whatever their opinions, that they're signing their names and their opinions, so that at least I can, we can bring it forward so it can go into the record.
Right, that's perfect. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Donna Morris. I'm a nurse at Walnut Grove in the memory unit, and the proposed animal shelter would be right next to that. And they kind of need peace and quiet. It agitates them to hear noise. And these residents have expressed an interest in expressing their concerns, but they don't want to come to the mic.
That's fine.
But anyway, that's why we came.
We'll make sure, I see they're taking names, we'll make sure their concerns are entered.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Hmm? There is one. Do we have a handheld? Do we have a handheld, Mike?
Patsy, might be one of the desk going...
See anything, Rick? Okay. There we go.
Patsy will fix it.
This didn't have batteries.
He's going to try and turn it on, Patsy, see if, just keep talking in it.
Keep talking.
We're seeing.
We do have that, if anyone would like to talk.
Gentlemen, my name is Ruby Solomon, and I am, I live at this place. I'm against the dog place being built, because we go out with our nurses, or with help, we go outside once in a while. What if some of those dogs, or one of them, get out? And you know dogs do get out, are pinned in places. We would not have a chance of getting back to safety. Plus, I don't know, it's just, there's just so many more places, it seems, that are much more better for a dog pound than right there, right by the, right by our building. Please, don't do that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ruby. Someone else?
With the dogs barking at all different hours, if we, if we had built the nurse, the dog kennel where it nursing home is, believe me, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to build a nursing home there. And with the noise, the dogs escaping, we've got a bad problem.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Patsy will take it. Thank you, Patsy. All right, thank you for your comments. That's all we'll be dealing with on animal shelter tonight, so y'all, you're certainly welcome to stay, and it might be entertaining, you might enjoy the rest of the city council meeting, who knows? We'll try. Okay, thank you for coming. All right, item five, we've got the economic development report. Scott? Scott Edmondson from the chamber?
Thank you, Mayor Sprouse. I've left each of you a copy of this, of the second quarter economic development report, and just wanted to hit a couple of highlights in the report, that through May of 2018, thus far this year, Springdale has, we've shown new job creation of 1,442 new jobs through May of 2018, and that comes from the Department of Workforce Services on their numbers. Our sales tax revenues in June, 18% increase over June of 2017, and through, and through June, the year-to-date is up 4.8% over year-to-date 2017, so our sales tax numbers are looking strong. The unemployment rate in May was 2.5%, which was one of the lowest, again, one of the lowest in the state. We did have good news, a couple of months ago, we mentioned the, that the governor had designated four census tracts within Springdale that, as opportunity zones, and I want to announce that those four census tracts, the Treasury Department and the IRS have given approval for those census tracts to get final approval for, as an opportunity zone, so that's good news there. Excuse me, those census tracts include all of the downtown master plan area, as well as our industrial park area to the east. Some announcements we had last week, American Tubing, they've merged with Sanwa Holding out of China, and that's very positive for the company, as there's possibility of continued job growth through American Tubing by way of this merger. We had the INWAC groundbreaking for their Springdale campus last few weeks ago, next RVs Ballpark, and then we also had several new openings with the restaurants, as far as Azul Tequila, and then also Dairy Queen started work on theirs. US Pizza has announced a site on the west side of town, as well as Smudgy's Desserts going in next to Tacos for Life, so. We had, in cooperation with the Downtown Springdale Alliance, held the Invest Springdale Summit, and we had over 200 people that attended that to inquire about all things good that are going on downtown, so. We recently held our ACES workshop, that's with the Career and Technical Education instructors through the Springdale High School, and we had over nearly 40, I believe, CT instructors from the school attend that three-day academy, so. Good things going on, and more to come, hopefully, in the future, so if there's any questions, I'd be happy to interview.
Okay, any questions for Scott? You mentioned the, early on there, when we're talking about downtown, the old San Jose Manor is...
Yes, sir.
Coming down.
Coming down, yeah, so that'll be a different look for a while.
Yes, sir, it'll change the scenery, so.
Uh-huh, sure will.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott. All right, we'll move on to item six, that's the approval of minutes. If there are no changes or additions, to entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Move.
Second.
You have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Thank you. Procedural motions, what's your pleasure, council?
Move for A and B, second.
Motion in a second for options A and B. Roll call, please.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Yes. Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Yes. Patsy, 8-0.
Yeah, let me also announce another change, in case anyone's here for it. Item 13 in the, on the agenda, that has been pulled, there's no, there's no action to take there, and so, in case anyone's here to speak on that, just wanted to be sure that you knew that, so you wouldn't feel obliged to have to stay. Item eight, planning commission reports and recommendations by Patsy Christie, Director Planning. Patsy?
The first item is a rezoning request for 2.45 acres located on, at 1799 Butterfield Coach Road by the First Marshale East Full Gospel Church. They are requesting to rezone the property from A1 to P1. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale-Larkens, signed the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to Institutional District P1 and declaring an emergency.
Pass.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second for approval of that ordinance. Any more questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Rose?
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry 8-0.
And as usual, each of these have an emergency clause, because we have action pending on those from development or sale going forward. The second one is a rezoning request for 20 acres owned by Northwest Arkansas Community College. This is a property located just west of the RVs Ballpark. Their request is to rezone the property from General Commercial District C2 to Institutional District P1. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale-Larkens, signed the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from General Commercial District C2 to Institutional District P1 and declaring an emergency.
Move this pass.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Rose?
J. Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry 8-0.
The next item, we got a little carried away with the P1 districts, because they were on a roll, but this is actually rezoning it from Commercial District C2 to Thoroughfare District C5. You should have received an amended ordinance and an amended agenda. This is 15 acres owned by Victory Church, located at 5441 Dearing Road, and as I said, their request is to rezone it from General Commercial District C2 to Thoroughfare Commercial District C5. Planning Commission recommends approval of the ordinance, the title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale-Larkens, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from General Commercial District C2 to Thoroughfare Commercial District C5 and declaring an emergency.
The ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further comments? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Rose?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
The next request is to rezone 431 acres owned by Clayton and Vanessa Bearden, located
at 4368 South 48th Street. Their request is to rezone the property from Agricultural District A1 to Neighborhood Office District O1. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending number, amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale-Larkens, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to Neighborhood Office District O1 and declaring an emergency.
Second.
That was Jim Reed. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Rose?
Fullfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
First clause be adopted.
Second.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry 8-0.
The last item is a resolution to consider a conditional use for Big Sexy Food Truck owned by Brent Hale to be located at 205 East Johnson. Again, this is in our downtown form-based code area, it'll be right over here at the corner. This will be the second one at that location. Planning Commission reviewed the request and recommends approval with the following conditions: may not operate between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. If health certificate is required, display the health certificate in a manner visible to customers. No obstruction of pedestrian or motor vehicle traffic flow. No obstruction of traffic signals or regulatory signs. No vending upon a public way. No sound device that produces a loud and raucous noise in violation of city ordinance or violate any other city ordinances in connection with the vending operation. Sites to remain clean and free of paper or refuse of any kind generated from the operation of the business, with all trash or debris accumulating within 20 feet of any vending stand to be collected and deposited into trash containers. Planning Commission recommends approval of this conditional use with those conditions. The title of the resolution reads a resolution approving a conditional use for Big Sexy Food Brent Hale at 205 East Johnson is set forth in ordinance number 4030.
The resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Rose?
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
The next request is to rezone 431 acres owned by Clayton and Vanessa Bearden, located
at 4368 South 48th Street. Their request is to rezone the property from Agricultural District A1 to Neighborhood Office District O1. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending number, amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale-Larkens, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to Neighborhood Office District O1 and declaring an emergency.
Second.
have a discussion about. This, item C, we actually, committee discussed this, this is the grant, right?
Yes, it's been, it's no longer a contract, it's a grant.
Right. And we asked Ernest and Wyman to take a look at that. We did go ahead and forward it to council, it's my understanding, without recommendation. And so, we could ask Ernest, maybe he can give us some updating on what y'all did on that.
Yes, first let me read the title, get that out of the way. It's a resolution approving a grant, amending the budget and other related items. The discussion at the, at the committee meeting, there was some concern about hiring a person. This has been changed. I believe it's been put in your drop box, the, the language of the agreement between the city and the Northwest Arkansas Council Foundation, Mistle Masters here. It would not involve the city having to hire anyone. Instead, there would be an oversight committee made up of city staff that would work with the council in the administration of the grant as far as-
And when you say council, you mean the Northwest Council?
Northwest Arkansas Council, correct. In administering the grant and would involve community, convening a community forum, creating a civic ac- academy, translating certain city documents and producing some videos as far as access to city services and also require quarterly reports. The main, the main concerns that were heard at the committee meeting had to do with the employing someone to do that, whereas we and the council, Northwest Arkansas Council, has agreed to participate with the city with an oversight committee to administer the terms of the grant.
So that these, to fulfill the terms of the grant, it could either be employees, an employee, or it could be contracted out. Certain services could be contracted out. There were no, there, there's no, there's no stipulations on how that money is spent as long as it goes toward these projects and these projects are done, correct?
But it would not involve the city having to hire a city employee as it was originally-
Not having to, but it does not preclude that.
Right.
It's, we can do whichever is most cost-effective to get the work done.
Mayor, I apologize. I've slept since the meeting the other night, but, and I think it was brought up. Is Fayetteville, Bentonville, Rogers, are they participating? Are they doing this or do we know?
I know Fayetteville is. Margot's here. Thank you, Margot.
Hi.
Yeah, sure. Come, come right up to the microphone, Margot.
Just gonna, just gonna say to answer your specific question in terms of this grant, specifically this collaborative grant that we're working in partnership with, that's been granted by Tyson Foods, is specific to the city of Fayetteville. Excuse me, city of Springdale, sorry. There's other cities who are doing similar work, but they were not funded by this grant. The city of Springdale was the only city funded by this grant, and that's because of the, the large operation that Tyson has in the city of Springdale, that it was really important for them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Margot?
I'm gonna move this resolution pass.
Okay, we have a motion.
I have a question of Wyman. If he could just explain the changes to the budget, why it shows a budget increase.
We were adding $96,400 to it.
The first-
Revenue.
The first contract stated specifically that some of the money would be paid this year and some of it next year. This one doesn't put a restriction on when the money's paid, so I put the entire grant in there. What's not spent this year will be added into next year's budget.
But it, it's not like 96,000 is going to be added to our general fund immediately. It's only when we submit an invoice, is that it?
Says that we will submit paid invoices for reimbursement when we spend money.
And, and it's possible, I guess, that it could go up to 96,000.
Right. I don't expect it to, but it's partly to carry over into next year.
Okay.
I have a, a question, Mayor, because it, it states that the city will translate critical city documents in Spanish and marshallees, and we were told at committee, some 40 city documents might be translated. And I understand this is for an outreach program to be inclusive, but my question is, how does that encourage assimilation if, should we not be encouraging English classes and, and in order to really learn about the city?
I, I, I don't think one precludes the other. I think, I think there are ti- there are, there are those who don't speak our language who need to know what, what the city offers now.
I understand, but to function, you have to speak English. And I, if we're translating documents into other languages, it looks to me like we would be farther ahead to encourage folks to, to acquire the ability to speak and converse in, in our native language. That's just my comment.
Hope they'll do that.
This doesn't specify a number. The original, the original proposal said 40, but, but the agreement now, it doesn't specify a number, and the documents that are to be translated are going to be approved by the oversight committee before those documents are translated or selected to be translated.
Yeah, says specifically the city attorney and human resources director after the doc, those documents have been approved.
Is it the city's responsibility, our staff that will do the translations and the videos, or your staff will do those tasks?
That's what this money will go for.
I keep, I keep, but I'm gonna ask-
Either contracted out or, or hire someone to do that.
I'm gonna ask, I asked this last week. It, it, it feels like we're a pass-through. I don't understand why your council, which I support, by the way, doesn't, why this grant has to be run through the city rather than directly from Tyson to this council?
Yeah, that's a good question.
I, I just don't understand. Help me understand.
I think a lot of it is because I'm just using these documents as an example. I mean, the, the council, the Northwest Arkansas Council is not going to understand probably why a lot of these documents are used or the context in which they're used, and that's why we believe that it's important to have some sort of city oversight, just as an example, over that, because they have, city staff have a better understanding of the context in which those documents are used, whereas someone on their foundation may not understand.
And this is specific to the city of Springdale. I think we're the, we're the ones who know best how to use this money.
I truly understand, Doug, but there are a lot of foundations in this community that serve this entire diverse community that we live in, whether you're marshallees, Asian, Hispanic. I mean, lots of foundations who, as I said, also will help. So I don't understand why this single foundation has to be, as I'm, I'm gonna use the word again, a pass-through for this grant. Why it can't be directly given to this foundation, which is a legitimate 501(c)(3) that they manage and report to, I presume, what I'm reading, to Tyson. That they don't, that we partner and help where we can. And if I'm missing something, I apologize. I'm just asking.
I'm just not, I, we're accepting a grant. We're asking you to accept 96,000, up to $96,000 in grant funds for these specific purposes, and we can oversee that for using that money to do that. I'm, I'm having a little trouble understanding all the concern. I thought we addressed the concerns very well with, with the changes we made.
Well, I'm sorry that I am obviously having-
Wait, we've got a motion on the table.
I understand. Okay, I understand.
So, August 1st of 2019, what, what is, what are we anticipating on the funding at that point? Because from what I understand, we're, we're not going to be creating a city position for this any longer. Is that correct?
That's right. It-
No.
As of the end of the grant period, that's it. The, unless, unless there's a further grant or further action to be taken, it doesn't go past that time.
So this is a one-year-
And if there's a, if it ends up, rather than contracting out, if there's an employee, they'll be hard with that understanding. That, that, it, their, their employment hinges on continued funding of a, additional funding of a grant in the future.
But the requirement's no longer in there, that everybody-
Right. The requirement's not in there.
Yeah.
So, so what we're saying is, we're changing what was sent to us to this, which is saying we're not creating a position within the city. This is us accepting money from Tyson to fund something through the Northwest Arkansas Council. That they're, they're setting this up.
That's my understanding. That's what I'm trying to wrap my head around that, Culver.
We're accepting a grant to accomplish the purposes that are listed in here that are going to be specific to city services. So city expertise and city knowledge is important in administering, making these services available.
We don't want the Northwest Council deciding what documents of ours are translated.
Just for the record, at committee, I made the comment that we're getting this at the 12th hour, and I know the mayor said this was a perfect storm, and I agree, and I think it's a good deal. I think with all the questions and misunderstanding, I don't know whether, I know we missed a meeting in July as far as committee, but maybe we shouldn't have missed that meeting, but to bring this to us, seems like there's just a lot of questions that maybe we're, we're not understanding at all, but I just don't like the last minute. Gotta do it or we miss out.
Is, is there a, when Tyson initiated this, did they go through the Northwest Arkansas Council?
Correct.
Is there a benefit to that, instead of them coming to us saying, hey, we want to give you a grant?
I can give a little background on that. So there were a number of organizations and entities that were applied to, to, excuse me, that were invited to apply for funding. The city of Springdale was one of them, and the way, and the way that Tyson responded to that was, we want to do this as a collaborative effort. We think that we can leverage each other's strengths, and we think that five organizations, including the city of Springdale, working together can do better together, essentially. So, you know, if, if, if someone has a strength in this, for example, you know, I've got these networks, you know, or, you know, that we can come together and create, have a, have a bigger impact on our community. So I think that's the reason why it's a collaborative grant. And for Tyson's purposes, they chose the collaborative, I mean, a benefit for them in terms of doing a collaborative grant is that instead of having five different organizations reporting to them, they have one, and that's, that's the Northwest Arkansas Council. And that, in terms of, of, of the council's work in serving as a convener and a collaborator for the region, that's a way that we can help in this effort. So it's really trying to make it easier, you know, on, on Tyson Foods, who's, who's been so generous to, to offer this funding, if that helps.
Thank you, Margot. So, we're being offered a grant for $96,400 to accomplish purposes that I hope everyone would agree are good purposes. The city staff will be in control of how these, how these grant dollars are administered to achieve these purchase, purposes. So, from that, I'm a little, I'm a little bewildered at why we're not, why we're not jumping all over this.
Okay, I've, I've got one more question, then I'll be quiet. So, we said we didn't want someone else deciding what documents to translate, and that's the reason that we're going to operate as the pass-through?
No, I don't, I don't, that's not the reason. That's a, I think that's a benefit from how this is being set up.
It, it, it's a benefit from the way it was originally designed, because the way it was originally brought forward at committee was, one of the conditions was that the city had to hire a full-time person to do that.
Right, right.
Well, you can't bring in a full-time person who's going to have the working knowledge of the various city departments. So that's why it's better to have existing city staff to help work with that as opposed to just bringing someone in on a temporary basis to do that.
Could I ask one more question? And I don't mean to make this go longer. Aren't most of our documents already translated? We've asked for them through planning, building, code, the city attorney's office. Aren't most of those documents already done?
I think it depends on departments, depends on, that's, that's one of the, that's one of the parts of this grant is, could help identify what documents are translated and maybe what other documents need to be translated, and who would-
Right.
-better accomplish that than city staff determining that.
If something doesn't need to be translated, well, good for us.
I think-
We don't have to trans, we don't have to spend money translating it.
I think with our diverse community, that, that this is our job, that we should be accepting this money to help these other people. I, I don't disagree with Mike on the fact that they need to get assimilated, but at the same time, there are a lot of them that are doing things right now wrong because they don't understand. And so we need to help them. That's why I made the motion that this resolution pass.
Helping people be good citizens helps us.
Right.
Regardless of the language they speak.
From my perspective, Doug, it never occurred to me, if I voted no or I asked questions, that I'm not encouraging people to be good citizens and that I don't want to cooperate with them. That's what I just tried to say.
That is not what I said at, in any form.
Okay, I'm just trying to be-
That is not even close to what I said.
All right, then I apologize, but that's, you're welcome.
Thank you.
I just, I just want to give one other comment, that the fact that the Northwest Arkansas Council is involved in this effort, it really feels strongly that this is very important for economic development for our region. So I think that it's, I just wanted to say that as well.
All right. Well, if we don't have a second, I guess we- Second. Thank you, Rick. Any other comments or questions? All right, Rose?
Jaycocks?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
No.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
I don't like the 12th hour, but yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Page 71.
Well, y'all sure have a way of giving the mayor a heart attack for a 7-1 vote, but I appreciate it.
Just like to discuss-
It was a good discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ernest and Margot, and everyone who was involved in, in Wyman, everyone who's involved in making those changes. Appreciate it. We're at item 10. Police and Fire Committee reports and recommendations. Rick?
I wasn't here, so I'll let whoever took that for me. I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I think it was Mike.
There was one item on fire and police, something fired last week. It was recommended for approval. It was an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for the repair of a heating and cooling system in Fire Station 1, and I simply think they just wanted AC, but I've slept since then.
Is there anything to add, Chief?
Would the ordinance pass?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any questions for Chief Irwin? Okay. Anyone in the audience? Kay Rose?
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jaycocks?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Both the ord- ordinance and emergency clause carry eight zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Item 11, Street and Capital Improvement Committee reports and recommendations. Chairman Rick Evans. Rick?
We had a meeting last week, Street and City IP, and we got two resolutions on the agenda tonight. Both of them were brought forward with recognition for approval. The first one is a resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering service contract for street drainage improvement for Ball Road and Cannonline Road, and this is part of the bond program.
Would the resolution pass?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Rose?
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Rose?
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item 12, Ordinance Committee Reports and Recommendations. Chairman Mike Overton. Mike?
Mayor, we have two ordinances that were passed out of committee for a recommendation for approval. The first is an ordinance amending Chapter 110, Article 7 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes, and this has to do with permits for parades, demonstrations, and block parties, and the city attorney can fill us in on the details.
This was a change that came as a request of the city clerk's office, Public Works, Police Department. It would, the main change, there's some cleanup language, but the main change involves when someone applies for one of these permits, that in certain instances, they would be required to post a $500 deposit retainer fee that would be used for cleanup costs, or if the event runs over on time and involves city employees having to either remain on site or to remove trash or other materials from the area.
The ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Okay, Rose?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Move the emergency clause pass.
Second.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Both the ordinance and emergency clause carry eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item, we're now at item 14, and I'm going to turn that over to Ernest.
Thank you. This is an ordinance authorizing a city clerk to file a lien for the raising and removal of a structure within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, located at 517 Mountain View Avenue. This, back in March, the council passed an ordinance raising the structure at this location, and this would recover the city's cost, or place a lien for the city's cost of $6,500 for raising the structure.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other comments or questions? Does anyone need to speak to this property? Okay, Rose?
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Both the ordinance and emergency clause carry eight zero.
Go ahead, Ernest.